As Mr. South suggested earlier this month. During his recent presentations regarding fourth quarter budget funds, Mr. South indicated that over $5 million could be shifted to the board's fund balance for the year, not just the quarter. But that move to the fund balance would restrict how the funds could be used, those millions of dollars. I request that the board use a portion of those funds to make a one-time, multimillion-dollar OPEB contribution. If WCPS must increase what it has contributed and contributing to the fund, this is the perfect time to do so before those funds are shifted to the fund balance. A significant contribution now would impact the need for future increases that could be passed on to the employees and the taxpayers. And again, I thank you for this opportunity to address you. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Appreciate your time today. Is there anyone else here today that would like to address the board? Any board members would like to make a public response? Yes, Mrs. Fisher.
I would just like to comment that it is great when we can keep our class sizes small, especially at the primary level. I'm a little bit concerned, though, that perhaps some people out in the audience might misinterpret Mr. Becker's statement. He talked about the primary classes being so important to keep them small, but then he talked about class sizes of 30, 32, and 36. While that sometimes happens at high school, I believe our highest classes right now are about 27 or 28 at an elementary level.
34, 37.
Well, not 36.
Oh, it might be. Dr. Will Cox has some updates.
I am aware at Potomac Heights, we have one class, fourth class, or fifth class, but we are working to address.
Are there any others? Are there any?
At that time.
That's the highest. Any further response to the public comment? Mrs. Fisher, were you finished? I didn't want to cut you off.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Ridenhour.
My correction, Mr. Becker, when you said about the fund balance, the money going into the fund, I apologize. The money going into the fund balance, that it couldn't be used, that what went into the fund balance is in the unrestricted fund balance, which means the board has some discretion over that, it's not set aside for any individual purpose.
And that's, I just wanted to ensure that because they often get reserved for one-time use, this would be an opportunity.
Well, anything in the fund balance is of one-time use by policy. Okay? But this was the, you know, it went into the unrestricted fund balance, you know, again, from the unrestricted, it could be moved to restricted, it can be used for one-time purposes. So, just a point of information.
Thank you, yeah. And that's the request, was that hopefully it would be encumbered for that portion.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Becker. All right. If we're completed with that. We're going to be moving to unfinished business. I'm getting a signal from the back that our mics, not everyone has a mic on. Do we, are we all mic'd and everything good? All right, unfinished business. Mr. Trata, we're looking at three second reads. The first one is the second read for policy CBI and CBIE.
Thank you. On September 1st, the Board of Education approved the first reading of policy CBI and the rescission of the exhibit to CBI. During the business meeting, members of the board engaged in discussion regarding the content of the policy. As a result of that extensive discussion, the policy committee examined the policy, and you will note that there had been some significant changes, modifications, to the wording of Article III. It must also be noted that after the first reading, the community was requested to provide comments. We did not receive any comments. The policy committee is recommending the approval of the second reading of this policy and the rescission of the exhibit thereto. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trata. Is there a motion for this action?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy CBI entitled School Superintendent Evaluation and the rescission of Exhibit CBIE entitled The Evaluation Cycle: Superintendent Evaluation Process and Timeline.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. A second?
Second.
Mr. Ridenhour. Floor is now open for discussion, questions, comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to this motion. All those in favor of approval of the second read? Looks like six with the student. Those opposed? Mrs. Harshman, I did.
I'm sorry, I voted late.
Which, opposed or supporting?
Support.
Support. So, it's seven zero with student concurring. Thank you.
Yes. Moving on to the second reading of the proposed new policy on child abuse. The Board of Education approved the first reading of policy JLF, which is entitled Reporting of Suspected Child Abuse and Child Neglect at its public business meeting conducted on September the first. Since the public meeting, the community was requested to offer comments. We did not receive any comments. Additionally, the policy committee conducted a public work session on September 9th, at which time it reviewed the comments offered by members of the Board of Education regarding Article I and Article IV of this policy. The policy committee modified the wording in the policy in light of the comments that were offered. The policy committee is requesting the approval of the second reading of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trata. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed policy JLF entitled Reporting of Suspected Child Abuse and Child Neglect and to rescind policy JH entitled Student Welfare: Reporting Child Abuse.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Okay, seeing none, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Looks like seven zero with student concurring. All right, our final second read on policy GBA.
Thank you. During the Board of Education's public business meeting conducted on September the first, it approved the first reading of policy GBA entitled Diversity. Since that time, the members of the community have provided with an opportunity to offer comments. We have not received any comments. The policy committee conducted a public work session on September 8th, and it focused on comments that were offered by members of the board during its business meeting. The committee is recommending modifications to Article IV, Section A of the policy as a result of the comments that were offered by the Board of Education. At this time, they're requesting the approval of the second reading of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trata. Again, a motion is required.
I move to approve the second reading of proposed policy GBA entitled Diversity.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Seeing none, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero, student concurs. Thank you. We're on to new business, a first read.
Thank you. In light of the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee and the Policy Committee to adopt policy GBA, both of these committees are now recommending that policy GBN and policy JBA, which are worded exactly the same, be rescinded. We're glad to respond to any questions.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading to rescind policy GBN entitled Equity and policy JBA entitled Equity.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. A second?
Second.
Mr. Ridenhour, discussion? Seeing none, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero, student concurs. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. We have, looks like, seven items on the consent agenda. Welcome, Mr. South.
Good afternoon. As you mentioned, I am here to request approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda items were included in the board's packet over the weekend. They were also included on board docs for the public to review over the weekend. There are seven items on the consent agenda this afternoon, and unless the board has a strong desire for me to go through them one by one, I will ask at this time for the board's approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a motion for this consent agenda?
Madam President, I move to approve the bid procurements for the purchase of custodial supplies to Weiss Brothers at $19,414.68, Pyramid School products at $8,588.67, Professional Design of the South Hagerstown High roof to BFM Architects at $64,985, Laptop computers and devices and USB drives to Apple Inc. at $109,145.80, Software licenses and services for elementary schools to Stride Academy at $239,000, $239,500, Software license and service for middle schools to Stride Academy at $69,500, Maintenance parking lot expansion to Huntsberry Brothers at $399,450, and Global Positioning Systems for buses renewed to Zonar Systems at $52,555.44.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. The floor is open for questions. We have several staff here. Mrs. Fisher.
Bid number six, Maintenance Department parking lot expansion at Center for CES, for Educational Services. What were the two building pads going to be used for?
Part of our long-term planning would be if there was ever a need to add additional space, like outside building. Over at 701, if you've been behind the building, there's a 30 by 33 building there. There's some interest from our group that's over there right now actually to take over that building. We're not prepared to give that up from the maintenance department. So, part of our long-term planning was to go ahead and to pour these pads, have them truly pad-ready, where a building could be erected either one or two, or never a building, not either one, if we didn't need it. So, it'd be kind of almost parking right now and/or if in the future, it would be building pads for one or two additional buildings that could go on the pads. Most important part of building that into our design right now is part of our bio-retention water runoff plan, which is a big, big deal when you're dealing in Maryland. We already have that built into our plan. We wouldn't have to come back five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, and redo the plan if we were to add buildings out in the future. So, right now, there's no plan to immediately build any buildings. There's no approval to building the buildings. There's no budget to building the buildings. But as a long-term plan, we've built that into the design of this project.
How long would those pads be good for if they're just sitting there exposed to the elements?
They're going to be sealed up, actually turns down to a 32-inch wide footer, and then it's a concrete poured. It's not like the traditional pour footer and build up with some block. It's always poured, all in one pad. So, they should remain in good shape. You know, I won't say forever, because everything deteriorates at some point, but for crack design and flaws and things like that, it should be designed to prevent all that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Other questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion. All those in favor? Looks like a seven zero with student concurring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to consideration of the second resolution of the Board of Education on the academic hub. Dr. Michael, I believe Mr. Rollins, Mr. Trata coming forward to present this.
Good afternoon, members of the board. We're here today on behalf of superintendent and staff requesting your consideration of a second resolution of the Board of Education regarding the academic hub. As the board's aware, we presented back on September 1st, discussion about two proposals regarding the academic hub in downtown Hagerstown. One was by the Bowman Development Group, one was by a group named Hager Five LLC. Staff has been through an extensive review process and has recommended the Bowman Development Group be the recommendation of staff to the board for consideration. This resolution would firm that up and give the superintendent direction to pursue a contract with Bowman Development Group to construct an academic hub. Staff and the superintendent's recommendation is for the option, that would be to purchase the property for $900,000 at the conclusion of the construction of the building, and that the building be billed at a maximum guaranteed price based on the current information at $14 million, 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 $14 million. The resolution would also, in addition to authorizing the superintendent to enter into contract negotiations with the Bowman Development Group, would be to identify any preconditions that need to be met by the Bowman Development Group. It would also seek to authorize the superintendent to seek state superintendent approval, IAC approval, Board of Public Works approval, secure the approval of the county commissioners for the alternative financing model and for the construction of the building. In addition to all those things, the resolution authorizes the superintendent to seek funding from the city in the amount of $1.5 million, $4 million in contribution from the county commissioners, in addition to a $6 million loan from the county commissioners that would be paid back by the Board of Education over a period of time. Additionally, the resolution would identify that $4 million of the reserve fund would be set aside for the academic hub project. And with that, we turn it over to the board. We're glad to respond to any questions or details regarding the resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Again, this is an action item for our consideration. It requires a motion.
Madam President, I move to approve the second resolution of the Board of Education of Washington County regarding the academic hub.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. The floor is open for discussion.
I have something I said.
Mr. Gessford.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. After giving this the highest consideration and thought about the future of the academic hub, it's hard for me to believe that anyone would see this as a fix to the Barbara, would not see this as a fix to the Barbara Ingram School. I can't believe anyone would build a hospital without an X-ray room, let alone a school without enough classrooms or cafeteria, but yet that is what's happened. We can't continue to do business with the mindset that we should build it and then figure it out later. Barbara Ingram is a good school, but it was built without the essentials. So, now, this is what it is come down to, we're throwing good money after bed. With the Bowman Project, there has been a final best offer proposed of $14 million for, but the fourth floor and the basement areas are listed as unfinished and not classroom-ready. So, that means more expense for future growth in these areas. There are so many extra fees that are not listed here, including a fire pump if needed, emergency generator, a wood shop dust collection system, and many other upgrades. That would be over the best and final offer. I see this project hitting anywhere $17 to $18 million, and we are limited to growth and expansion, no parking, and then we would need to purchase the land. So, another quarterly budget adjustment, and another quarter, we have a budget win-fall of money. But at whose expense? Well, I think it's on the back of our students, our teachers, our ESPs, and our parents, let alone the Maryland taxpayer. We are asking teachers to do more with less. We ask them, don't call off, don't take personal time. We don't want our B-team in front of our students, probably because if the substitutes are in front of the students, our testing results will not be as good. So, as a result, we now have over $1 million in extra funds in the budget that were for substitute teachers. The leftover funds now get funneled into the fund balance, so we can ask to build a school that only a few more hundred students will benefit from, but at the expense of tired-drained teachers and ESPs. How about funneling it back into our already existing schools? How about adding more teachers to the classroom sizes that they can be reduced to 15 to 17 students, adding a full-time guidance council to all elementary schools? I would think that adding one teacher to grades one through three at every school would be highly acceptable to our teaching staff, especially when our children aren't at their, are at their early learning stages. It would be a huge benefit at the literacy program, since we are hitting about a 70% Our student enrollment is trending downward, and over the next few years, it is projected to decrease, or at best be status quo. That means no increase to maintenance of effort, no increase of funds. Now is not the time to be building, but to remodeling, renovating our existing schools. We are recently, we were recently told that 14 schools will be hitting the 50-year mark in the next 10 years. And just because it is on the fixed, to-fixed list this or that year, doesn't mean that it has to wait till the roof leaks. We can do these projects now with these funds that are being earmarked for a project that could potentially go over budget. Furthermore, I don't see the funding source for the academic hub. I have not seen one letter from the city of Hagerstown saying that they're committed to the $1.5 million. I have not seen one letter from the commissioners that they are willing to give us $4 million and then to lend us another $6 million. If this board or its superintendent has a plan to borrow the money elsewhere, then that will be a whole new can of worms that will have to be opened up. I think the citizens of Washington County will be very vocal against the school board and its superintendent for borrowing money when they see the money that's hidden in the budget each year, just so it can move into a fund balance to the tune of $5.1 million in 2015, $4.7 in 2014, and another $4.1 million in fiscal 2013. These funds have increased each year since 2013 and possibly longer. These quarterly budget adjustments have become a pattern over the last few years of bloated budget allocations. These are not coincidence, these are patterns, patterns at the expenses of our children, our staff, and the Maryland taxpayer. So, at this time, and it's my opinion, I will not be supporting any project called the academic hub, the Barbara Ingram expansion, or any resolution. What I would agree to is number one, and more importantly, adding more teachers to the classrooms, two, fixing our broken computers that teachers are calling me about all the time, three, purchasing new computers for all of our schools so they have enough to get through testing times, four, renovations and upgrades to our existing schools, and finally, number five, a fund for employee raises and pensions. So, I will be voting no, and these are just my opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford, for sharing those opinions. Are there any questions that you might have on some of the concerns that you would like to address with staff?
Not this time.
All right, next, Mrs. Fisher.
I would respectfully request from Mr. Gessford a copy of what he just read, so that I might be able to sit down and address some of his egregious and inaccurate statements.
But they're my opinions, Mrs. Fisher.
The question was, would you be willing to share your comments?
No.
Okay. Any other question, Mr. Ridenhour?
Along with sharing that, which could have been shared ahead of time, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear Mr. Ridenhour.
Along with sharing, it would be my hope that Mr. Gessford would also share the source of some of his information and assumptions. Number one, he said something about money hidden in the budget, bloated budget, talked about more teachers in the classrooms. I would respectfully ask Mr. Gessford where we're going to put those teachers, considering we are pretty much out of classroom space in most of our high schools. We have two high schools that are well over state-rated capacity. We have three others that are 90-some percent of state-created capacity and over local-rated capacity. The only two high schools that we have where space is available are Hancock and Clear Spring. So, it would be difficult to put more teachers in some of these schools when it's pretty difficult to figure out where they're going to go. There was also an assumption that this particular amount of money was going to be more than $15.5 million, when in fact, the contract that we were negotiating with the Bowman Group put that as a cap. It was a capped amount. So, no, it can't go to $17.5 million this year and in that budget and in that contract, in that contract. It cannot go above $15.5 million. And that's not an opinion, that's a fact. And there were some other things said. I couldn't write everything down, I apologize. But there were some other assumptions there that just, that make me shake my head. You're more than, more than, as a member, you have a right to vote against this particular resolution, but I think, I don't think you put opinions out that have no basis in fact. And some of those have absolutely no basis in fact.
Any other questions for staff on the resolution, Mr. Ridenhour, at this time?
No.
Okay. Let me continue to someone who hasn't spoken, and then we'll go back around. Anyone here would like to make? Yes.
I'm not convinced that we need an academic hub, and if I were convinced of the need for an academic hub, my feeling is that downtown Hagerstown is not the place for it, for a variety of reasons. I am convinced, however, that a correction is needed for the current situation that exists at the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, and this proposal is about the fix, more so than an academic hub, in my opinion. At our last business meeting, I heard one of my colleagues say that the academic hub is not an expansion of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. I believe its major purpose is to provide a much-needed fix to the current situation that exists there. Currently, Barbara Ingram School for the Arts has inadequate classroom space, no science labs, and no cafeteria. The creation of an academic hub downtown would be a fix for Bispa, and Bispa needs a fix. We would not be discussing an academic hub downtown if it weren't for the fact that Bispa has to be fixed. From before the time I became a member of this board, the property next to Bispa has been talked about as the solution to the Bispa problem. Passing this resolution to have the Bowman Group build an academic hub downtown would require this board to ask the commissioners for $4 million outright and to then assist us with a loan of another $6 million. $6 million that would be repaid by taking money from the general operating fund for decades. These repayments would be in addition to the lease payments for Bispa that are currently being made and that will continue for many years to come. I'm not in favor of doing that. I'm not in favor of creating more debt to make this project happen. We need to look at our existing facilities and properties to fix the situation at Bispa. Our school systems needs are many, and our resources are limited. This year, we were told that ours is a bare-bones budget. We have elementary classrooms where the number of students far exceeds what is best for learning. I've heard teachers who, in the second month of school, are purchasing their own paper because their allocation for the year was insufficient. And then, we're facing a situation with contributions to our employees' retirement benefits that will require additional funds. I would like to see us use all of our current assets to the fullest. Next year, we will have a school building in the west end of Hagerstown, less than a mile of downtown, that might be repurposed for use by secondary students. This could be done at a much lower cost to the taxpayers. If we're okay busing students to an academic hub next to Bispa, wouldn't it be feasible to bus students from Bispa to a repurposed Winter Street Elementary School? So, I'll be voting against this resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Harshman, I think, any comments?
I do. Watching the presentation by Mr. South on the quarterly budget report and the questions asked by several commissioners, it sparked my concerns about the money being directed toward the educational hub. We have seen several full presentations by the Bowman Group, and we have not yet seen any full presentation by the Hager Five Group. And yet, we have been asked to allow the staff to make the decision based on their opinions, excluding us from performing our duties, to vote based on all the information available. Another concern I have is that there were two sites that were bought by Bowman, the Bowman Group and the Hager Five Group, and I'm just wondering what Bowman Group and the Hager Five Group, and I'm just wondering what amount of knowledge was out there prior to our decision to increase the size of Biswa or add the hub downtown. It seems kind of odd to me that people would go out and buy land downtown where we had been searching for an extension of our services. Also, we have not yet seen the classes that would be held downtown. The only thing that has been addressed is a few internships that could be linked to the hub. I don't know if other possible locations have been looked at, but I would certainly be in favor of looking at places that we currently own where something could be done to increase maybe the size of a school, to allow the hub to exist there. I know that the Antietam Academy is a fairly new school and certainly could provide an excellent location for Biswa and/or the hub, because it would be right next to Tech High, where we have other students already trying to get in when we don't have enough room for them. The Antietam Academy could be moved to Winter Street or downtown to the Biswa building if we use that area where there is ample land and even sort of an amphitheater that goes down to the baseball fields for E. Russell Hicks. And the last thing is the monies that the county commissioners asked about should be put back into the schools to provide students with classes in which they have the best opportunity to learn and succeed. And I do not feel, in any situation, an elementary class of 34 is fulfilling our responsibility to our children and to our educators. When I asked how this problem would be solved, I was told that the principals would need to be creative. We have money for more teachers, which is a solution that allows principals to direct their efforts toward running the school successfully, instead of spending much time and energy experimenting with creative measures that turn out to be worthless, so they must move on to Plan B. It takes no creativity, just logic, to know that 34 elementary students in one class is unreasonable and educationally unsound. Based on these concerns and my desire to end smoke and mirrors that have been preventing the best use of our funds provided by our county commissioners, I will not be voting for this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Harshman. Ms. Greenwall, would you like to comment on this proposal?
Actually, on one thing that Mrs. Williams had said, one of your ideas being busing students from Barbara Ingram to Winter Street, correct me if I'm wrong, I actually think that is probably more unwise to do, because I mean, like, as a student, even, we had mentioned this in the county commissioner meeting, going from classroom to classroom breaks up a lot of concentration. And I would think that busing students from the downtown to Winter Street just wouldn't be a good idea, I mean, for, I mean, a lot of reasons, really. And if they were to walk, that would also be, I think, a safety issue. And also, when are we able to get the numbers on, like, the average, I guess, class size in elementary school? Because I feel like we're using the number of 34, and Dr. Wilcox had said that it had only been in one instance, so I would like to know maybe, like, what an average would be, because I think that would probably be a better number to use.
I'd like to respond to the average thing, if I could.
Well, I think that should be a staff response, because we will be hearing about the enrollment coming forward, and that discussion can be had.
Well, I'm out in the schools many times, and I know that there are classes that are over 30. And even if there's one, it's too many. So the average in that building probably is not 34, nor is the average in any other of the buildings 34. But if you're the teacher in the classroom with 34 or 36 students, you're the one, you and your class suffers. So that needs to be addressed. And when we have money that we could put into additional teachers, that's where it should go.
Any additional comments, Ms. Greenwall?
I just actually have one question for Dr. Michael. We, when we were at the county commissioner meeting, you had mentioned that the, for projections, that the numbers will, you would say, stay stagnant. Are we projecting a decline, or are we projecting the numbers to go down? I know you said you had to wait till the end of September, but as of right now, if you could, I guess, shoot from the hip?
For this current year, we're likely to decline a little bit. We anticipated last year during our presentation in April, May, that we would have a decline this year, and then we're showing for the out year, so we start to improve again. Again, what I share with the county commissioners, their own projections, what they're out sharing with the community in draft form right now, they're projecting that Washington County is going to grow by 50,000 citizens. I believe the year was 2040. I might need to be corrected on that year if I have the wrong year. That's a substantial amount of growth in a county I think that's about 150,000 right now. That's a 25% increase. Again, what will schools look like by then? That might change dramatically, but I think some long-term planning needs to be included in that, if indeed, the county, not our projections, but the county believes we're going to grow at that rate. One of the questions I asked during that presentation that I attended at the library, what's the demographics of that 50,000 growth? Is it all old people like me and getting older? Is it young people coming in? Is it, you know, do we have school-aged children in that 50,000? And that was something their staff was working on. But our projection only go out 10 years. They're dramatically affected by housing growth. The housing projections they had in that, I think, was like 20,000 new houses. I think, Rob, I shared a number. It's just not coming to me off the top of my head. I mean, they're predicting a substantial amount of growth from the county level. I think there needs, if their numbers are accurate, this, these aren't our numbers, there needs to be a lot of thought about given to long term. And long term comes up quickly. I mean, part of the information regarding the academic hub is the challenge that we're faced with University of Maryland. University of Maryland's growing right now. They're competing for the same space that we're leasing from University of Maryland. If they suddenly need their space and we no longer have that space, there needs to be another decision. I'm not defending the Biswa decision, one way or the other, but for the last five or six years, things have operated very well. It's been a very successful school. It is a point of pride in our county, and I think it was a great decision. Maybe not complete in some ways, but a great decision. Sorry, I can't answer a question, but right now, flat and potential decline, as predicted last year, probably flat for a couple of years, and then we start to grow again. And we, we need planning. It takes several years to plan for these things. Our Sharpsburg is our next large project. We anticipate growth in South County, and that is supported by the Maryland Department of Planning for the Sharpsburg project, as it currently does need our CIP.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. And we'll come back around if you have another question. Dr. Harding, so I think you're the only one that hasn't had an opportunity.
Yes, I'll just, I've spoken several times about the academic hub, so I won't repeat here what I've said in the past. I think it's a, I think it's the kinds of, I think it's a critical piece in providing the kinds of learning environments that certainly I want to see for our kids, creating the kinds of environments that I think give kids relevant experiences for the 21st century and for when they go off into the, into the world of work. So I continue to support the project. I want to thank the Bowman Group. I thank, again, Hager Five for putting in a thoughtful proposal. I know there were other groups out there who considered putting in proposals but didn't. I want to thank them as well. I want to thank the staff for all the time that they've put into reviewing the proposals, evaluating them, asking the hard questions of the people who offered the proposals. I think you brought us a very good option, and it's one that I'm going to be pleased to support. Before I give up the floor, I, having served on finance for, Finance Committee for almost seven years now, I feel a need to say a few words about the budget. I certainly don't believe there are smoke and mirrors involved in our budget. If somebody at this table or on this board or in this room or anybody can tell us right now, actually, if they could have told us back in March, when we approved the budget for next year, what kind of winter we're going to have this winter, then maybe we could take some money out of utilities in that budget. If somebody could have told us last March whether we're going to have an insurance holiday next year, then certainly we could have reallocated, we could reallocate $800,000 from next year's budget. If somebody last March could tell us which particular vacancies we're going to have in our employment, which teachers are not going to be there, which administrators might retire, then certainly we could budget for the savings that would come with those things. And if there's somebody who can do all that, by all means, let's do it. But until then, I support, as, by the way, the full board supported the final budget that we approved this year. I support budgeting so that if we have a hard winter, we can pay our utility bills without taking money from other places in the budget. I support funding all of the positions in the budget where we expect employees to work. Now, do we know there are going to be some employees who leave their jobs, and there's going to be some savings there? Sure. But I don't want to be the person to go up to an employee and say, you know what? We're not going to fund your position this year, because we think somebody's probably not going to be in their job. They might leave, and so we'll have a vacancy, and we'll use the savings there to pay your salary. So I don't think there's smoke and mirrors in this budget. I don't think there's smoke and mirrors in any of the budgets that, that we've passed. People get into financial trouble when they don't plan for contingencies. Is planning for a hard winter a contingency? Yeah, it is. But I think that's responsible. And maybe what some people call smoke and mirrors, I call responsible. But I don't think that the members of the staff who work hard to put their budgets together do it trying to create smoke and mirrors. And I'll just say one more thing about budgeting. I worked in an organization where if you didn't spend what you had in your budget, you didn't get it next year. We do not want to work in an organization like that. It makes for bad decisions, wasted money. We don't want to be that organization. So, that's all I have to say. I just, having served on the Finance Committee for as long as I have, I felt like I needed to stand up for the processes that we've used and the people who spend a lot of time putting their budgets together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. I believe we'll start back around. Mr. Gessford, you had?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. The sentence was, I would think that adding one teacher to grades one through three at every school would be highly acceptable. I didn't say anything about high school classrooms. And also, the amount of money that I said is in the project. Yeah, it's 14.4. It's the final and best offer. I don't think that one, once the money is all calculated over, you know, five years, you're going to be anywhere close to that. And it's just going to be keep, you're going to keep adding a little bit more to the budget of that project over the long haul. So, yeah, it may come in at 14.4, you know, when you sign the contract, but when you say, oh, the fire marshal comes in and goes, you know what? We do need that fire pump, that's going to get added on top of the 14, because it says in that proposal that that's not included in the 14.4. Am I correct?
Do you trust that, Dr. Michael?
I think that is, that is correct, and that did happen at Biswa. However, we do have a fire pump at Biswa, and it's quite possible that that would be adequate to serve both buildings.
But we don't know that. We don't know. And that's what I'm saying, there might be added expenses to that, that we're saying it's the best and final, but there's something else come along. Then, I know that you, that there was a program that you wanted to put a wood shop down there, and they, they need to have a wood shop dust collection system. And if you're going to put that in, that's additional money, and it's not included in that best and final offer, is it?
It is not, but it's not part of our expectation at this time.
But that was something that was brought up to us, that there was going to be, you know, possibly a wood shop go down there. There's no generator put down in there, and that would be an additional fee.
But there's, there's no space for a generator downtown. We don't see where MEMA would have that involved in any way.
If there's a way, well, there's a way. I mean, I, I can see someone saying, let's, let's talk to the neighbors, see if we can put a generator over there. I mean, it, it's possibilities. I mean, it may not happen, that's fine, but it also needs to be put on the table that it's a possibility that it could happen. So, that's all I was saying about the 14.4. It could be more than that. And then, you know, that's before we even build out the fourth floor and the basement. You know, you say, hey, you know, we're, we're doing wonderful down there. We need to build out that, that basement and that fourth floor. That's additional fees. And if it's a lab, there's all that expense. I mean, I don't know what, what your intentions are. I mean, it could be, you know, you could just put desks in there, and it would be very minimal. But I think the taxpayers need to understand that it's just not 14.4 million dollars. It could be a lot more over the long haul of the project. And again, you know, we had a commissioner say, what happens if we are doing really well, and we need to grow more? Where do we go? And again, that's just my opinion. It's just me talking. You've got seven, six other board members here, just me.
We don't take anything personal. We're, we're fine with anybody's opinion. I do want to note that the 14 million is a guaranteed maximum price. Part of the proposal from Bowman is, if they generate any savings through their bidding process, which will be with three or four local companies, that we would have the opportunity to reap in that savings and would lower the cost of the project and/or select additional alternates, which are some of these other items you're mentioning, if we wanted to include those in the project. So that would be some of the benefits and some of the options that were presented in the proposal, which we were thought, made the proposal quite, quite attractive to Washington County.
Thank you. Dr. Wilcox.
I just wanted to add. A couple of things to the conversation, and I won't speak specifically to Biswa, but I will speak to class size. Right now, within the district, there are nine classrooms at the elementary level out of 452 that have over 27 students in them.
Keep that down.
There are nine classrooms in the district out of 452 and a half classrooms that have over 27 students in them. Nine. It's one of those things where, you know, when I talk about averages, there are liars, liars and damn statisticians, and I get that, that, you know, there are these classes. But I also want to share with you this, that when we take a look at our elementary kindergarten enrollment of 1,582 kids, there are 75 classrooms. The average class size is 19 and a half for kindergarten classrooms. Our first grade average class size is 20.8. Our second grade average class size is 20.33. Our second grade magnet classrooms are 22.75, slightly larger than their, the non-gifted classrooms. Our third grade classrooms are at 22.13. Magnet programs are at 21.5 at fifth grade. These statistics are very current. They came from Matt Sembler, who is our Director of Elementary Programs. When you look at fourth grade, our programs are at 23 to 1, and the magnet programs are at 20 to 1. You take a look at grade five, we have 22.47 to 1 as a system-wide average, and we also have magnet programs for fifth grade at a system-wide average of 20 to 1. The overall district average elementary school is 21.3 students per classroom. Represents Matt probably within, what, the last week data? So I do understand that there are some classrooms that are large, and that creates a very difficult situation for that teacher. I have said to the principals, please do your best to address that. I can tell you I'm, have a copy of, because this question was raised earlier, of what the principal is doing at Potomac Heights, and he communicated with his families on September 18th, what he was doing to bring class sizes down. And I will share that with the board members a little bit later, so you can see that. So, in terms of class size, I think we are appropriately applying our resources to them, but certainly there are outliers that perhaps give some pause. But I wanted the board to know that we don't have any average classes of 26 to 1. We have some class-sized classrooms.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. I know those numbers are still fluid for a while, and in this county, they're fluid probably throughout the entire year. A lot of high mobility, but, yeah, I understand that. So, I wanted to try to get back around a second time.
My question relates to the averages that Dr. Wilcox had just.
Mrs. Williams.
I'm interested in knowing the process. I know how to find an average, but I'm interested in understanding the process at which we arrive at these averages. Are we taking the number of students?
No.
Who are we counting in with these?
Only classrooms of record, meaning a teacher with 20 kids in front of them. It does not include guidance. It doesn't include counseling. It doesn't include counseling. It doesn't include any other ancillary positions. And in fact, it doesn't include paraprofessionals. It is a straight classroom teacher with their students.
Thank you.
Okay, going back around, I think Mrs. Fisher has a second.
Not right now.
Opportunity, Mr. Reidenhour.
I'll soon call the question.
Could I have a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like one too, please.
Go ahead with your second. Excuse me.
Okay. Those who were here to establish Biswa and sit on the board today have a vested interest in continuing to supply necessities to downtown. We all know that that board and the superintendent approved the location knowing full well much more would have to be added. There was no cafeteria, not enough classrooms, no performance area for an art school, no parking, no room for expansion. Who builds a school like that and then dumps the fix on the future boards and superintendents? And my reference to smoke and mirrors was directed at our being told that positively the budget was at bare bones, only to find about a week later or two weeks, a million dollars. Thank you.
Trying to figure that one out.
Has everyone had a second chance? I want to be sure I didn't miss a second chance. I'm going to make my comments and then I believe you had called the question.
Well, I was one, I was the person on the board, obviously, at the time.
So was I.
And Mrs. Fisher, yes. So seems to be some kind of accusation that we just went ahead with something without knowing what was going on, figuring that we'd fix it at some time in the future. We, yes, we did know. There was no cafeteria. With all due respect, the kids don't care and didn't care through the first six years of Barbara Ingram that we didn't have a cafeteria. I blame Dr. Wilcox for this because he thought they should have one and set it up that we had it over at the Bridge of Life. So that's his fault. As far as a performance area, there is a small performance area. It's not an auditorium because we knew the Maryland Theater was right next door and they were more than happy to take our money for performances, a specific amount based on how many people we bring into that building. And there is a performance area, the Black Box Theater is a performance area. There are numerous performances that take place there. There are performances that take place on the dance floor. There are performances that take place in a variety of other places. Classroom space, we had classroom space and we've had it for eight years. How many years have we been there, Boyd? Seven?
Six up, 2000.
Six or seven?
Six.
We've had the classroom space set up. We knew right from the beginning and commissioners knew, the public knew, there was nothing hidden from anyone that at some point in time, we probably would have to have classroom space. And it was going to cost money. This should not be a surprise, nor should it be an accusation that this was poor planning and, you know, this school shouldn't have been built because it didn't have classroom, its own classroom space. This is nothing new. Nothing new at all. To say that this was a bad idea, I doubt that you could go through those kids that have been in that school and have one of them say, gee, this was such a bad idea because I didn't have a cafeteria or the Black Box Theater was just not big enough. Those kids also do not have sports teams. They do not have other amenities that our comprehensive high schools have. There's not one of them complaining about that. They make a choice to go to this school. They audition and they're chosen based on their performance in an audition. There is nothing to do, none of the people that are in charge of accepting those kids takes a look at their academic record. None of those kids are judged on their academic record. They are judged strictly on their performance in an audition. Yet, those kids have succeeded above expectations of almost every high school in Washington County, as far as their performance academically and in other areas. So to say that this was a bad idea, that, you know, that the board back then, you know, how dumb they were, we were, for going along with this, well, go at it. I'll stand by the decision anytime, anyplace. Chuckle as you wish. I would stand by that decision because this school has been a monumental success.
Okay, that's your, thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Mrs. Fisher.
I preceded Mr. Reidenhour and Mrs. Brightman in helping to formulate Biswa. I was the go-between, between the school board and the school that this was modeled after, the very successful School for the Arts in Baltimore on Pratt Street downtown. At the time, when I visited there, they were in the process of acquiring the building next door to expand their program so they would have more classroom space as well as more performance space. So there was nothing that wasn't known about what would happen in the future, what we would need. I don't suspect, this is just me, I don't suspect that the number of students at Biswa will grow ever beyond the 300 that was originally proposed. Not unless, in fact, the commissioners are correct and we do add another 50,000 people by 2040. And by the way, 50,000 more is 33% more, not 25% more. And I was an English teacher, not a math teacher. I just, I'm shocked at the reactions from some of my colleagues. I'm shocked from some of the comments from some of my colleagues that have very little, if any, factual information behind them, almost scare tactics some of my colleagues are using on this item. I know Ms. Brightman has not had a chance to speak. She needs a chance to speak and then I think we need to vote.
Mrs. Brightman, may I have my second time, please?
Yes, ma'am. Since this was all known at the time, was it also known that this property that we're looking at now would be the solution to all of the problems at some point in the future? And what was the plan to pay for this? Why was not money, money put aside in a designated fund through the designate, or through the fund balance? Why leave it to eight years out when now we're looking at having to take money from the general fund and away from other important categories to pay payments on a debt that's in addition to the debt that we're still paying on and we will continue to pay on? I don't, I don't understand that, how it's been let go all of this time with no plan for creating a situation that you went into, knowing that at some point, someone was going to have to fix. And now we find ourselves in tough financial times between a rock and a hard place, trying to make things right for students who deserve the very best that we can give them, those at Biswa and the others in our schools in Washington County.
Are you asking me?
I'm asking anyone.
No.
I'm asking anyone that's part of the discussion.
Again, this is not a back and forth at this point, please. Could I make some comments here? And then we're, I think it's important to understand the history and I'm not sure why we're getting bogged down, but okay, it's a good conversation to have. We spent an hour and a half with the county commissioners and today, which is why we were late. And it's interesting, when I joined this board in 2007, Biswa was pretty much out of the station and moving down the track. We hadn't done all the final funding. Mr. Reidenhour and I are the only two members now on this board who actually voted on that, even though, Mrs. Fisher, you did work and do obviously a lot of background research. This was the first case of a county using the alternative financing that had gone into effect in 2004. This was a public-private partnership. This was on the leading edge and I, I don't know how many times Commissioner Myers mentioned the need to have public-private partnerships at our joint meeting today. And that's exactly what this was. It was one option of several under that law. Also, under an alternative financing legislation, the county commissioners have to sign off on the project. They have to be right there with us as full partners. Let me remind you who served on the board when this project moved forward. It was John Barr, Bill Wival, Terry Baker, Kristen Alshier, and Jim Kirchvoll. And they signed a letter supporting this project. The county commissioners, not county commissioners, the delegation was made up of Chris Shank, Leroy Myers, George Edwards, McKay, McKee was on there, yeah, at that time, and Don These are all the same players in the room, except for Kirchvoll, who is not elected at this point. And they all thought this private-public partnership was great. They went to the state, they got bond money that we put towards this. I mean, all of the same people that seemed to be having buyer's remorse were there at the time. So I just put that out there for reference. And I have to say, when I first came on the board and I looked at this, I was a skeptic. Some of the staff members here, Mr. Reidenhour will probably remember that I was concerned. And in fact, some of the same issues I'm hearing from colleagues, using operating dollars for capital projects, you know, this idea of specialized programs, this non-traditional, where, you know, sort of, it's odd, it's unusual, what to think, you know, what about equity? What about the brain drain from our schools to the school? And, and the idea of, again, of equity. And I have to tell you, I voted for it and held my breath because as a board, when the majority supports something, you get behind it and you try to make it work. You try to be the most effective and efficient and you do the work of the board in that government, governance capacity. Over the years, enrollment has grown, programs have expanded, we've had reduced bullying and discipline issues, we've had high graduation rates, great test scores. But what's really, to me, this was sort of the, the virus that started into, and I mean that in a good way, tech high school really started getting into specialized programs. We have the Public Service Academy, Clear Spring Hancock, particularly Clear Spring, started doing these student-driven, student-centered, putting students first and what they need at that secondary level to go on from us into college career, owning their own business. We have the Writing Academy, we have Boonsborough with their world languages, we have internships, we have a virtual high school, we have robotics, we have middle college. We have so many opportunities. And there's part of me, it's a little hard to say, but I think Barbara Ingram was the beginning of that conversation in this county. And if we're not willing to push forward with that conversation, I think we do our students a disservice. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't pay attention, that we shouldn't have oversight, that we shouldn't try to get the best deal for the money. But again, if we're looking toward serving students and making Washington County graduates competitive in the world, this is the way we do it. So thank you for allowing me my one chance and a little bit of a history lesson. But again, when you look at the people who were in the room when this decision was made, I'd like them to tell me what is so different about this project from that project. And in fact, we're wiser, we're, we know more, we've been there, we know how to make this work and we're actually going to save the taxpayers and the citizens money. So those are my opinions. Any additional conversations? I'm going to go ahead and call the question if I don't see, and I believe it was a motion by Dr. Hardings originally. All those in favor? That's four. Those opposed? That's three. And the student concurs with the majority, the motion moves forward and the resolution will be signed and enacted. Thank you. All right. Our next consideration is the Maryland Association of Boards of Education nominations for committee assignments. We did have one addition, I believe Mrs. Chekovik handed that out to everyone. Mrs. Harshman asked to be added to the conference planning. Does everyone have that additional item so we all know what we're, the motion will be Just for the public to know, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education has several, they have several standing committees and board members from throughout the state are asked to serve. Dr. Hardings has offered to serve on budget and planning. I've offered to serve on legislative. The conference planning is Melissa Williams and Karen Harshman. The Federal Relations Network remains unfilled. Mr. Reidenhour has offered to serve on nominating. Mrs. Williams has offered to serve on resolutions and Mr. Guesford has offered to serve on the MAPE Awards. So that is the roster as presented. I would, since this is an action item and we need to send that to MAPE here shortly, they've asked for a return by September 24th. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the board to endorse the nominations for MAPE committee assignments as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. A second?
Second.
That was Mrs. Harshman. Thank you. Any discussion on these? So again, we do have an alternate space for the legislative and we do have the Federal Relations Network if anyone would like to volunteer. Hearing no further questions or comments, I'll call Dr. Hardings' motion. All those in favor of the roster as presented? Excuse me?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, let's, let's see, five in support. All those abstaining, two abstentions. And I'm sorry, Miss, concurred with the majority? Very good. Thank you. We're now moving on to the adoption of the Washington County Board of Education core values, legislative priorities, and the legislative team and representative. Mr. Trotter, would you like to come forward to, to be ready to expand on any questions the board members may have on this and as a honored member of the Legislative Response Team? And as a honored member of the Legislative Response Team. I'll do just a small introduction. Pursuant to Policy BJ, we did hold a work session. The work session helped us develop the Core Values, Legislative Priorities, and Local Initiatives for the 2016 Maryland General Assembly. They also helped us reach general agreement on a Legislative Response Team. And also to approve, move forward for approval of the appointment of Mrs. Cade as our Legislative Representative in Annapolis during the session. So we have three motions. We'll take them individually and discuss and vote on them sequentially. So the first motion, is there someone who can make that, to approve the Core Values, Legislative Priorities, and Local Initiatives?
Madam President, I move to approve the Core Values, Legislative Priorities, and Local Initiatives for the 2016 Maryland Legislative Session as discussed at the work session on September 1, 2015, and as provided in draft form to all board members.
I'll second. Second, Mrs. Fisher, thank you. Everyone received the packet and the, some of the final language driven by our work session, so there's a discussion on the motion before us.
Madam President, I would like to make an amendment to add an item to the Legislative And it is, if I may read it into the record.
A priority or initiative? Leave it would be a local initiative?
Yeah, local initiative, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I move to add the following. After, it is fractionated tuition. And would hope that it, I'm going to pass this out, the language out that I've put together, I'll pass it down so everybody can take a look at it. Establish legislative authority to allow LEAs to collect fractionated tuition payments from private school, home school, or other students who are not enrolled full-time in the local LEA. These tuitions would be made by the student's parent or guardian. This is-
Is that the amendment, right there? Can I stop and get a second on that and then let you discuss?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Reidenhour has put an amendment, a motion to amend, to add a local initiative. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. All right. Now, Mr. Reidenhour, if you speak to your motion.
President Breitman, this authority would allow students to take a single class, or perhaps several classes, in public school without being enrolled or counted as a full-time student. Students would have to meet the same requirements as other students eligible for enrollment in public schools, vaccinations, residency, and others. The public school system would have the authority to charge the student parent not more than the fraction of the school day that the student spends in the public school times the LEAs per pupil allocation. Any such student who is not enrolled full-time would not be counted toward the LEAs enrollment for purposes of calculating MOE or state education aid. Now, the reasons for the support, my support of this proposal, my offering these reasons, as public schools and public entities, we should strive to serve all of the students and young people in our communities. Other public entities, colleges, junior colleges, libraries, parks, do not take an all-or-nothing approach to the provision of public services. For WCPS, some instructional programs are difficult to provide without large numbers of students, band, orchestra, and chorus, to name a few. Specialized instructors are difficult to find, some foreign languages, advanced math and science, and other programs, or other disciplines. Part-time students could benefit from these public school capabilities and add enrichment to the classroom environment. Spent a little bit of time, or spent a lot of time Monday at a panel discussion on heroin, the heroin issue in Washington County. So, I believe the local drug problem, global strife and division, national political division, all highlight the need to work together to serve our young people and the community in which they live. There should not be a mindset of, only our students should be permitted to utilize our schools. During the panel discussion, children in schools outside of WCPS are no less children than those inside the system. If we're as good as we think we are, those students who take advantage of this opportunity may take advantage at some point of all the opportunities that we have to offer. Walk in a classroom, find out, wow, this is pretty good stuff. Perhaps it's time for me to come back, or perhaps it's time for me to be a full-time member of Washington County Public Schools. As I said, I spent some time, or spent the whole time at the panel discussion. We have issues outside of the school system. The community and the people on that panel were not looking at Washington County Public School children, they were looking at all the children. And I believe that's what we should do. I think that's our responsibility, and I think this would help get all children involved in our system. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Comments, questions on the amendment? Mrs. Fisher?
I agree with what Mr. Reidenhour has said, and I'm looking strictly at what's at the top, the actual wording of the proposal. There is one kind of question in the back of my mind, not all classes cost the same to offer. Science classes, for instance, often involve a lot, the use of a lot of materials, chemicals, of animals for dissection and so on. And I think science classes might be some of the ones that would be most utilized because I would think home school children's parents often are not skilled in that area. One thing later on, I think we ought to consider if this passes is, the one item under here, the one, I don't know which one it is down here right now, but the one that talks about just a fraction, like if there's six classes a day, you divide what a day would cost and by six. But that's just a consideration for later.
Just to answer that, when you're looking at the science classes, science classes include layups. Consequently, the fraction that you would be paying would be different than a history class. Because there is more time spent in a science class than there is in a history class. Because they have, get extra credit because of the layup.
Does that address your question?
I'd still like to study it further, but that does not change-
Preclude.
Right.
Okay. And I would imagine as, if this is to pass, does pass this evening, I'm sure we'll be doing some clarification on issues like that. So, Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I don't have my notes from our work session where we discussed this and we decided that something similar to this, we were not going to move forward. So can you explain, since I don't have my notes, can you explain to me how this differs from what we decided we would not include as a local initiative?
One of the things that was, I think, the misunderstanding was the fact, who would pay? There was some assumption, and maybe the way it was written, some misunderstanding as to who would be responsible for payment. This responsibility would be with the parent or guardian, not with the state. Money would not come from our maintenance of effort for this.
Yes. So, we have students who are in private schools, being homeschooled, who have made the decision, or their parents have made the decision for them, not to enroll in a public school, which is their right. Now we're going to be able, by law, to charge them to attend a class in a school that they could attend for free? I don't understand how this would be something that you could do, to charge students to come to a school that they could otherwise come to if they chose to.
In order to receive the services of a public school system, you must be enrolled as a student at the school. So this would create a mechanism by which, if a student was not enrolled but wanted to take, and I see it as certain classes determined by the superintendent that would be made available, a course of study, then that student could sign up for that particular class, much like a college-level class, and there would be a tuition, once again, I believe, established by the superintendent examining the cost associated with that particular class. And there could be, you would want to differentiate between a high-cost type class situation as opposed to a, another type of class situation. So it would create an opportunity for students to take certain classes in a public school system.
Mrs. Harshman?
Were you finished? At the time that we talked about this, and I did not see any of us with a misunderstanding about the fact that the parents would pay this, one of the issues was, where would the student take this class? If the student lives in Smithsburg and the class that the student wants to take is not available at Smithsburg High School, could the student then pick another school to go to? Which of course, I think at the time, we mentioned, it could be up to the student then to pick which school. And if there happened to be a school where, let's say, an AP class had extremely high students, someplace like maybe North High, because they have a bigger pool to draw from, so they may have exceptionally high students in a particular class, whereas another school that's smaller may not have as many, or may not have, may have some students in there who are not, who are pushing themselves to be an AP. So if this student then picks where the high performers are, we're allowing someone who's not in the school system to make a choice that we do not allow our students to do. And I think that's a big mistake. It's calling, it's calling out an idea that, okay, you can choose and pick your own, and the fact that it's similar to colleges is one thing, but you don't see students going to all different colleges to take different classes and then trying to get them transferred. They normally stay in a college and maybe have to take a class here or there, with the idea that it will be accepted and will be used toward their graduation. But in this case, it's pick and choose as you choose. And if you don't like who's teaching it, if you don't like where it is, you don't have to go. But our kids, who are enrolled, do, and they don't get the opportunity to choose a different school where maybe that class is performing at a higher level. So I think this sends all kinds of bad messages, whereas if you pull your child out, you can pick and choose where he or she can go to different classes throughout the county.
As I would envision this program, it would be a course of study that would be determined by the superintendent. And the superintendent would have to determine at which schools the opportunities might be provided. So I don't see this as someone would say to the school system, here's what class I'm going to take, and here is what school that I'm going to be attending. It would be more of a catalog in that here are the schools and here are the classes that are available.
But that's even more of a, your choice. Here, this one is given at South High, but it's not given at North or anywhere else. Do you want to take that? Then you have to go to South High. If this one is given at South and North and Boonsboro, now you can pick whichever one. And it's obvious that all the courses are not available to students at all the high schools. Because I know, as a high school teacher and as my son went through, there were courses that were not available at his school that were available at others. So there again, you're picking and choosing, and perhaps you are picking and choosing based on the performance of that school.
I don't envision it being structured the way that you've described it.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Reidenhour?
Well, I can respond to that, again.
Of course.
I think the manner which Mr. Trotta is speaking to is correct, but I also think that more than likely, more than likely, students are going to go to the school that is closest to them and take that course if it's available at that school. The other thing you have to remember is, our kids do have the opportunity to pick and choose in some ways. I do know, for example, that Smithsburg High School, there are a large number, believe it or not, significant number of students who are at that school to take a class.
That's offered at their home schools?
No, I'm talking about our public school students.
I said that's offered, that's offered at their home schools.
It is not offered at the home schools.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. It's not offered there, that's the reason they're there.
You were saying that they were going to pick and choose.
Yes, if it's offered to two schools.
I don't think that that would be set up in that manner. But the fact of the matter still is that our kids do have some flexibility. The kids that are enrolled in Washington County Public Schools have some flexibility as to what school they're going to go to if there is something in another school that is not available at their home school. It already happens. I know that for absolute certainty. So.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to speak? We're again looking at Mr. Reidenhour's amendment to add an item to the local initiative that would establish legislative authority to allow LEAs to collect fractionated tuition payments from private school, home school, or other students who are not enrolled full-time in the local LEA. These tuition payments would be made by the student's parent or guardian. Everyone understands the motion? All those in favor of this amendment? Those opposed? Three opposed. And the student concurs with the majority? Okay, the motion moves forward, that will be included as our second initiative. So I'm back to the main original motion to approve the Core Values, Legislative Priorities, and the amended local initiative. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, those opposed. Two, and student concurred with the majority. All right, we're on to the second motion to approve the appointments to the Legislative Response Team. That was the general agreement from the work session. Was it, sorry, go ahead, if you want to make the motion include-
Madam President, I move, I move to appoint to the Legislative Response Team, Mrs. Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, Mr. Trotta, Ms. Cade, and myself.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the makeup of the Legislative Response Team? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I believe at the time that Mr. Reidenhour volunteered to serve in an emergency or some, you know, not, not as an official member of the Legislative Response Team, and at this time, I would like to say that I would like to serve as a full-time member of that team.
Okay, so are you making that an amendment to the original motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the motion to add Mrs. Williams to the Legislative Response Team. Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the first second?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, Mrs. Williams, okay. All right. Any discussion on that? Okay, the question is on the amendment to the original motion that would add Mrs. Williams to the Legislative Response Team. All those in favor? Looks like five, those opposed. Two, and student concurred with the majority. Thank you. Okay, we're back to Dr. Harding's original motion amended now to include Mrs. Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Looks like a seven-zero, and student concurs with the majority. We're on to the third motion to approve the appointment of Mrs. Cade as the Washington County Board of Education Legislative Representative.
Madam President, I move to approve the appointment of Mrs. Cade as the Washington County Board of Education Legislative Representative.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
That was a Mrs. Williams, I believe. Thank you. Any discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify. Looks like seven-zero with a student concurring with the majority. That- That completes the formal action on the legislative core values and priorities. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. That brings us to superintendent updates.
I have no report.
Personnel.
Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, as discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your consideration and approval.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move for the approval of recommendations on personnel by staff.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Williams, thank you. Okay, the motion is on the recommended personnel recommendations. All those in favor? Seven-zero, and the student abstains.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've just received a note from Dr. Wilcox. Staff has asked that we reschedule the early learning presentation that we had on today's agenda. I believe the lateness of the day, and we do have a hard stop, so the Agenda Committee will look at that and will put that back on everyone's schedule. So that brings us to Board Member Committee reports, and I've lost track of which end to start on. I don't think it matters, Ms. Greenwall.
Right now, the only thing to report for WCSC is we had our first General Assembly here at CES. It went really, really well. Dr. Wilcox was able to stop in for a little bit and to say hi, and it was a great first meeting, probably one of the best we've ever had. And also, in other good news, we have just had our advisor be named as Mr. Orith, and we are so excited to finally be able to start our year and to be able to plan things and just get going.
Thank you. Mrs. Harshman, CNI?
We did not have a meeting since our last business meeting, so we will be having the next meeting on, let's see, October 27, 12 o'clock, in the Board Conference Room, and the agenda will be posted, and everyone is welcome to attend.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, Facilities?
Yes, Facilities, the Facilities Committee, I was going to say Facilities will be meeting...
Sorry.
The Facilities Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, September 29, at 9:30, in the Deputy Superintendent's Conference Room.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Gessford.
Nothing to report at this time.
Date for next meeting or not set up?
Not set.
Okay. Policy Review and Development, Mrs. Fisher.
Policy Committee has met twice since our last business meeting. We met on September 8 and reviewed and approved the equity policy that was on for first read today, as well as the three policies that were on for second read for today. Also, after receiving some input from Dr. Wilcox, we altered the Board Communication Process time period for researching Board Member requests without approval. Actually, it's been changed twice now, I think. I think we're back to our original 30 minutes at this point. But this document, along with Board norms, will come up for vote in October. We also discussed the next steps in the formation of a Board Member Handbook. Then we met this morning at 8:30 and received and amended a policy on school activities. We reviewed and amended, I can't read my own writing, I'm sorry, a policy on school activities on Sunday. Next, we discussed changes to our policy on charter schools. These changes will be necessary because of the state changing its rulings through the Public Charter of School Improvement Act of 2015. We also discussed the need to establish a policy relevant to intellectual, our intellectual policy on individuals who create documents, lesson plans, and so on. We'll continue researching the law and what other school systems and various agencies are doing. Finally, we discussed the formation of a table of contents for a Board of Ed Handbook after looking at six or seven counties' table of contents. They were all counties within the state of Maryland so far. We will be meeting twice in October. Those dates are the 13th and the 27th.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes, ma'am. HR Committee will meet next Tuesday at 8:30 in the Upstate Washington Room on the third The agenda will be posted.
Thank you. That takes us to future agenda items. We will, in October, be back to our meetings. The daytime meeting is being the first on October 6, and our evening meeting on October You'll see that we have a work session on state assessment survey response scheduled for October 6. To remind my colleagues, they did receive an electronic document plus the executive level summary. I believe it's about a 300-page document, so the executive level summary may be a starting place, as well as specifically test assessment survey response of Washington County itself. The full survey is statewide, but it does give you some points of comparison. We'll also be receiving our annual financial audit on our FY '25 budget on October 6. Okay, that takes us to Board Member comments. Mr. Ridenhour?
Nothing at this time. I think, you know, we've been here long enough. You don't need me to be long-winded.
I would agree. I'm sort of... Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, I want to congratulate Nicole Paylor, the Principal of Conca Jig Elementary School, for being selected to receive the Maryland Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development Award for Individual Excellence. And I'm going to read a statement from the letter I received upon her being awarded this. So she is being recognized for being a commencement professional leader who translates vision into action. The planning, instructional services provided, and the evidence of student learning, as well as her own personal growth, are compelling evidence of the positive effect of her collaborative leadership style. Academic achievement for all students is evident from the many initiatives she has established. She truly exemplifies the words "learn, teach, and lead." So congratulations to Ms. Paylor.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
Nothing.
Dr. Hardings?
Just a couple of comments. First, just doing some quick math on the suggestion of adding first, second, and third grade teachers to all of our elementary schools. We have 26 elementary schools. That's three teachers per school at about $75,000 fully burdened salary. The cost for an initiative like that would be about $6 million a year. So just to put some boundaries on what exactly was being suggested. Two other things. I had a band parent who made a suggestion to me, which I thought was a good one, so I thought I'd pass it along to the superintendent and the board. This parent noticed that the board recognizes state champion athletes and state championship teams. This parent suggested that perhaps we should also recognize at board meetings those who qualify for all-state status as musicians. I'm not sure how many there are or how that might work, but I thought it was a good suggestion that we can recognize them for their accomplishments and abilities as well. Finally, I attended the, I'm not sure how they marketed it, but an evening in this room for students who are applying to college, I think it was students who are considering applying to top-tier colleges. I've never seen so many people in this room. It was standing room only. It was last Wednesday. It was the night of the heroine community discussion, so that's one of the reasons I wasn't there. I was here with my family. But it was really, really impressive, the discussion. Great questions from parents, a very, very knowledgeable speaker. So I just want to thank all the people involved in making that happen. I know Mrs. Handler was the one who first told me about it. Mrs. Reinhardt was involved, Mrs. Moore. I know Mr. Akers was here, probably leaving somebody out, but it really was an energetic group of people who were really focused on student achievement and trying to connect students with opportunities. So thanks to all of the counseling staff. I've pushed the counseling staff, let's put it that way, and I think it's only appropriate that when they do something that really blows my doors off, that I acknowledge that they did so, and they did. So thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
Just that I'm looking forward to the MAE conference coming up Wednesday through Friday of next week. We have five members attending, along with Dr. Wilcox, and Dr. Wilcox is slated to participate in a panel discussion. Looking forward to that. I would also like to say that last evening I attended a meeting of the Diversity Task Force, and it was another training, the same training, I believe, Mrs. Francisco, that administrators had, no, not the same, the one that's going to be presented in schools to some of our employees this week, coming? Okay. And then someone told me that on YouTube, the administrators' training session has been posted, so some of my colleagues would like to take a look at that. I'm not sure how to, what words to use to search that on YouTube.
We'll send it out.
That can be sent out. So I would like to thank Mrs. Francisco for her continuing efforts in providing the consultants that are coming and offering these professional development experiences. I look forward to, I was given a book last evening, and I'm looking forward to at least watching on YouTube the presentation that will be made by the author of that book in May. So thank you, Mrs. Francisco, for what you're doing to move our efforts forward with regard to training our employees in the area of diversity.
Thank you. Ms. Harshman?
Well, just a point of clarification. I don't believe that anyone suggested adding a teacher to every elementary school, but I know that the ones where there are classrooms that are overcrowded, which would be, to me, at least 30 or more students, it certainly would be beneficial. So I don't believe the cost would be too exorbitant, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Greenwall?
I have nothing at this time.
All right. Dr. Wilcox?
Happy to be alive. Thank you all.
Me too. Just a couple housekeeping follow-ups. The letter from the Maryland Theater that I shared with all my colleagues. Dr. Wilcox reached out to the Executive Director of the Maryland Theater, Jessica Green, and responded to the letter. I reached out to my peer, the President of the Board of Trustees or Directors, I'm not sure which terminology they use, Ken Grove, and asked for some, just clarification on the letter and how they saw the partnership moving forward, and he assured me he would get with his board. He had been out of town and would be in communication with us. Also, I had received an invitation to attend the Central Maryland Labor Council meeting that was held last Monday evening. In full disclosure, I made it very clear that I was not representing anyone's opinions but my own, and the basic conversation was about the changing landscape at the state level, as well as the local level. So those are the only two items I have to share. That brings us to the end of our agenda, as agreed to, and we are now adjourned.